I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can come in. Have a seat. I have to sit up there.
We got plenty of chairs here.
We decided if we wanted to talk naffing, nobody could hear us.
No. I just get, I just get.
Yeah, we could. Why would anybody do that? Okay, so that means meeting minutes, Monday, November 19th, 2018, town office at 5:00 PM. Present were Shirley Humphrey, Andrew Bucher, absent was G.D. Elton, staff, Chris Littlefield, town manager, and several citizens. Item number one was the minutes of the previous meetings, which I read aloud for November 5th, 2018, and motion to accept the minutes as they were read and we voted two zero to accept. Under item two, public forum, the heat group handed out a request to the board of selectmen and would like a response by December 7th. It is titled, "Request to close the landfill." Michelle Cole from Blake Street stated that the town is doing nothing with the trash and animals on Blake Street, and her children can't go outside to play, and the animals have no food or water. Stated Al is very rude when she calls. She doesn't understand why nothing can be done. The town is working on an ordinance that requires a town meeting to approve. As it said, we will accelerate the process for an ordinance. Under item three, unfinished business. The heat is on at the unconsolidated school. The town received the deed today and have forwarded to our lawyer. Cal Warner volunteered is timed to pile the schoolyard as they had functions going on. The town will do the piling when we legally own it. Sold more items from the town hall. Still no solid plan on taking it down. Under item four, new business, 2019 health insurance rates. Seven employees are on the health plan, and we voted two zero to increase the town coverage from $957 to $995.24. A question was asked if we shop around for prices, and no, we participate with MMA. The audit ticket for the town office will be closed on 12/24 and 12/25, 12/31 and 1/19, and we voted to do that two zero. We reviewed and signed an audit, and we reviewed notice from MMA on cable franchise changes. Under other, item five, Eric Tuttle, proposal for updating our current website, the board to review and put on next agenda under unfinished business. Resident asked, who do we have piling for us? And Chris stated, Bruce Mon, Bill Ramsey, Kerry Hughes, Keith Badger, Jim Russ, and Kendall Davis. And a resident asked, how many days is the transfer station closed? Hadley stated, three. Make an ordinance to protect the citizens.
Protect what?
I'll have to look at that. I can't remember either.
I haven't already.
The board needs to step up and start protecting the citizens of the town. Last meeting, the board wouldn't pay an exterminator bill for Marie, and Debbie thought there was something that could be done to help, an abatement, since we did one back in the spring. Just a second. Excuse me. Municipal government does not pay for rat infestation, and abatements are not used like that. And then item six, we signed warrants, respectfully submitted, Susan Fox, administrative assistant.
Would we accept the minutes as rep?
I can't second that until I find out what that statement is. Make an ordinance to protect the citizens. It's not clear.
It was about...
Eric, can you remember?
It was about getting trash and stuff like that off the streets in a weekly manner, such that there's no reason of...
So it concerned trash?
Basically, it is concerned trash. Yes, that's why the dump question was asked. There's no reason that trash cannot be taken care of on a weekly manner, whether we have it hauled off, or sufficient days within the week to get it there. If a person really is going to be on vacation, or has other extenuating circumstances, they could contact the town office. Basically, what it's about is sanitary. We don't need to be looking like a public dump on that subject.
Right. Okay.
Hadley also, where it said that I had wanted an abatement for Marie, that's not really true. I just said that that was contradictory, that they didn't pay her bill and they paid somebody else's bill.
They paid somebody else's rat bill?
Sewer bill.
There was an abatement until the process.
But you paid it, just the same. I didn't think she could get an abatement. It's not the same thing, but it was just contradictory that they did for one and didn't do it for another, yes.
Okay. Item required the pass moment, so we can move on. I make a motion that we accept the minutes with the amendment. Protect the citizens of this town concerning trash. That's our...
Second.
Follow some favor. Thank you. Okay, public forum.
Yes, this kind of leads right into my question. Regarding the sewer abatement that was documented in the December 4th, 2017 minutes, could we kind of get an explanation as to why that was given? There are a lot of people that can't pay their taxes, and actually, people's houses get taken away from them because they can't pay their taxes. And I just wondered why this person got an abatement of $600 when other people have a lot of...
Wasn't being used?
I'm not sure that would have been...
I know Hadley had abstained from it, so I don't know if there was a reason for that.
There's probably the payment to him.
Yeah, and it wasn't the full amount. Debbie, it was a partial amount.
Right, $600.
Which was what, 75%?
It was like...
Well, if nobody's living in an apartment, you don't charge them the full amount. You charge a basic, what is it, $16 if you have an apartment and it's empty?
But it's still paying somebody else's bills.
Sixteen, sixty-six.
There was obviously a bill there.
You said a couple weeks ago that a town, a citizen's children expect the town to pay their bills. That's what you told that lady.
Well, not...
Given to this, who paid somebody's bill?
Well, that's not the kind of bill I was talking about. Like, we can't pay for exterminators. We can't, you know, those kinds of things. When are people to pay?
I agree. What about sewer bills?
Well, there had to have been a reason.
Well, that's what we're asking.
Yeah.
Give the minutes.
Can you remember what it was?
An abatement, the process is done, it's reviewed. The circumstance at that time was a vacant building, unknown to the individual, that a bill had been run up for multitudes of months, and the abatement was partial abatement. What's given?
It's a rental place.
It's a business.
So...
But we had other, we've had other abatements on sewer also, that when people, and you have to go through the process of the abatement.
So you have a guideline procedure?
Yes, the forms have refilled out.
And this fell in that guideline?
It fell in there.
Was that a town-caused bill? Was the town responsible for creating that bill? In what way? That the person moved out of the business, out of the rental business?
No, we charge a sewer bill.
Ah, no. The bill is supposed to be paid by the person or the owner of the property, but the town did not cause that person to move out. However, on the rat issue, the town may have caused the issue by importing external waste from another town. So the town may have caused that bill, but they didn't, they definitely did not cause the bill of...
We have had rats all over this town. We had a problem up on Commercial Street. We've had other problems. We cannot do that, and we're not going to set a precedent.
Okay, so you're setting the precedence of paying somebody's sewer bill just because...
By their applying and fitting within the guidelines. They apply for an abatement and fit within the guidelines.
So if I moved out and I left you, the town, with the bill, you would pay it?
Well, it depends on the circumstances.
No.
We all know who properly pays the bill.
It's supposed to be the case, yes.
But the owner is the only one who can apply for an abatement. If they apply for an abatement, there's a process for that that has to be followed.
And how do you...
It was followed.
How do you give abatements to somebody's bills?
It's the process that we follow. It's the state of Maine rights. We use the state of Maine laws to govern our sewer.
I don't see how you, how you can abate somebody's bills, even if it is to the town. The person was...
We do it all the time. Something that's been done for years. It's, it's a legal process that gets followed. We have people apply for abatements on the regular.
So you're saying, you're saying it's a legal process?
Yeah.
So if it is a legal process, and people, the requesters want to know where the legal process is, the statute that allows it, all the information pertinent to it. That's what they're basically requesting. What authorizes you to do this? In this situation versus another situation?
Okay?
Yes, Earl.
I went up to my yacht the other day, and the water guy was checking meters on that particular piece of property. He checked one meter. There's two rents. Now, I assume the sewer bill is paid on the water bill. Is that correct? You're evaluating. However, that's processed. So with that, those two rents, two separate buildings, have one water hookup. How do you, who determines the sewer bill? That one person is using, the others don't?
All right, I'll answer that, since it's my property. It goes through one meter, and that meter is paid. Both houses go through one meter, Earl.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine does too. I have an apartment in the back of my house.
He has two rents, two buildings.
Well, mine aren't. I've got two apartments in my building.
But this is, I'm just asking. I don't...
Well, I just told you the answer. It goes through one meter, both houses.
So how did you know which one used 50 gallons?
Doesn't matter. They share the bill.
Oh, oh. So the bill that the town paid was for two people. One of them was still living there. Is that correct?
All I'm saying is that abatement is something that went through the proper channels. Anybody can apply for it. The process is right up there. Not saying that...
We're not going to talk about this anymore. That's enough. Well, we're here to run the business of the town, not to debate on something like that. We've given you an answer. We're all in problem. The process, that's legal.
This is public comment, so...
We don't have to take public comments.
No, until you close it, you do. So until you move on, other than public comment, yes, you do.
Well, then we'll move on.
Okay, because that's a public comment period closer.
No, no, we're not moving yet. This is for the selectmen. Back September 19th, I handed Chris, all the DEP people, a letter. Did you guys receive this?
What was it he got to?
Shirley's.
I may be able to, yes.
You have it, didn't you?
I'd love, yeah, I get copies for everybody, just as a refresher. Because I put this in an email Friday night about one of you guys, kind of, on the back on it, a little concerned about it. And I brought Chris another copy where he already had one.
We haven't seen this before.
The reason the selectmen did not see it is because you guys weren't, I couldn't keep up. You guys left before I got a chance to talk to you then. But Shirley already did it somewhere along the line. She, she wrote it a while back. I'm going back to Boston next week, so maybe you guys should think about this a little bit, because Boston's anxious to hear what you guys think. How about you guys return an email back to me where I attached Debbie wanting to do it? No, 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 Friday night.
I didn't get this. I'm sorry. I did not...
I want an email back, so I got proof.
I guess we'll have...
Because this is going to go further if I don't get that email, like I asked.
Well, you have to do what you have to do. However, if DEP is saying to us that there's nothing dangerous, what are we supposed to do about it? And even if we close that landfill tomorrow, it's not going to stop anything. The odor is going to continue for years.
You figure a solution. I'm all, don't, no, no, no. You guys talk through.
We've done everything we can, everything we've been told to try, we've tried. And, you know, I'm sorry about this. I would hate to have my spouse be in that position if I thought something was causing it, but we've been assured that nothing is causing an, an oxygen soda that is dangerous.
So I will, I will inform over the videotape when I go back to Boston. This will go further. So plan, plan on answering Thomas, because there's a medical record, medical record there with her number. They'd love to discuss something.
I have a question. You said you've done everything possible to close this landfill.
No, we have, I did not say that. We've done everything possible to make it, the odor go away.
Well, it could have been treated. The odor wouldn't have been better than it's that one.
We've done every treatment we've been told that would work, and nothing has.
We don't need to argue this. Let's just move forward with the agenda. It's, it's a closed issue.
One last statement. Have you ever heard of the Brownsville project program, excuse me?
Yeah, we've done a couple of them.
I would suggest working with them again.
Okay, we're going to move on. Unfinished business?
I think Michelle had her hand up.
Just following up on last week with the ordinances, I also have a question about that and the noise ordinances.
And the what? I'm sorry.
A noise ordinance. I was informed by Mark Brooks that there is none, but I got videos of 2:00 in the morning, 1:00 in the morning, from here to those windows, chain claws, swearing, costing, radio, doors, banging on metal. My kid has trucks. If he doesn't get sleep, mama's out. If I don't get sleep, I'm hell-bent. I'm kind of trapped. I had a discussion with my mortgage company about just walking, packing up, and just leaving that in the house to go, and my repercussions from that. That's how bad it's getting. I'm on a low dose of chemo now, so to be next to that. And the trash is still there, Chris, from two weeks ago. All torn apart. I mean, and I've talked to two lawyers, and they both say the town should be helping me on this. I said the town says no. I called the courthouse. They said there's nothing to file under it. They said, everyone I talked to, even Mark Brooks, refers me back here.
And Mark will have to put an ordinance in. However, is he going to be grandfathered?
How can you be grandfathered with noise ordinance?
Well, we, we have to discuss the noise ordinance. We discuss the animal...
I know the, the cow's stuff, but he's already planning on getting more. I heard he made a down payment on goats. He, Susan Fox sat here last week and said he got those pigs, which we fed over Thanksgiving. They were squealing so bad, just to upset us neighbors. That's like 10 feet from my house. Can you imagine smelling that come spring? He hasn't cleaned them. ACO's coming out. The cow is now bones. I have to sit and listen to it moo itself for us and watch it two thousands.
I know...
Can we just do something?
I know Eric had researched some state laws and sent you an email on them. Isn't there something that maybe you could call the state police for her?
The ACO will be out this week.
The ACO?
We'll call main municipal's lawyers.
They will not take the animal. The, let me make this clear again. The animals aren't my issue. Them being starved and the stench is my issue. I'm all for people killing their own meat. Those are my core things.
I believe...
I mean, I have on video with timestamps that I even showed, and he's not just gingerly soaring at 2:00 in the morning. He's riding it. And my, my kid comes flying out of bed because he also shines his high beam lights right at our house, 2:00 in the morning. We're stuck, and I am begging for something.
And the police want to help you.
There's no ordinance. That's why we have people like this.
But if there's a state ordinance, we should be able to enforce a state ordinance.
Mark Brooks' exact words were, it was a municipal issue, that it was, and I found nuisance neighbor laws, but they all refer me back to the town.
Okay, what we're going to do, and we're going to move on, what we're going to do is call main municipal lawyers and find out what, what's on the books, and then we'll devise something for the town. But there's got to be something that the state has on the books.
They have the nuisance neighbor law, but we're, my, I've been sick. We're barely making our bills now. I cannot afford a lawyer on top of the...
Well, we're going to look into that, okay?
Okay, I gotta stay with the, the email I sent is state statute. You do not need an ordinance to follow state law.
Well, we know that.
Okay, then do something about it. Now.
We just said we were going to.
No, no, I mean now.
You're getting very sarcastic, and I don't like it.
I don't care what you like. You're here to serve the people.
Be quiet. You don't have a right to speak in this meeting.
Why don't I?
Because you weren't given permission, and the state law says you cannot speak without permission.
I am a resident of this town, and I am a voting citizen.
You either be quiet, or you leave.
I'm glad I got that on camera.
I'm glad you did too, because that is state law.
No, it isn't.
It is too. It is state law.
No, it isn't, no.
Well, it is a state law.
Unless you close that public comment, it is not state law.
You do not have a right to speak unless you are called upon, period. This is a meeting for this, the four of us. No one is entitled to speak here whatsoever unless we call on you. That is the state law.
You opened, you opened a public comment.
Right. Public comment, if you're called on.
And we, we moved on to unfinished business.
Right. Raise your hands.
And everybody else has been speaking. Everybody else has been speaking, as if it was never closed.
Right. We're, we're done with it. We're going to move on, because we're not going to get anywhere sitting here arguing back and forth. We're going to get some attorneys involved, and we're going to get to the bottom of it.
Okay, I would, I would suggest the chair use the gavel a little bit more. Close, close public comment when it's duly closed.
It's already closed. We're on unfinished business.
Hey, Eric, stop.
So on the unfinished business, the proposal for updating our current website, it's been suggested that we're not compliant with the Freedom of Access Act. We are compliant. The staff and I have had a great deal of discussion about it, the pros and the cons. And my recommendation to the board is we just continue on the way that we're operating at this point in time. And I'd like a motion on that.
Make motion and accept that.
Second.
Follow some favor. Here is a vote. Under no business, ITCC.
Thank you very much. We've got a lot of things going on down at the community center, and we thought that there's several things that we wanted you to be aware of. If you don't mind, this is very crude, but this is our thermometer.
Looks good to me.
And we, the only thing that's on here is the fundraising that we've done, not any renting, not any donations or anything.
That's not what the rec committee is working on for fundraisers too.
So as you can see...
This is just basically...
As you can see, we have raised almost $2,500 with our plan to raise the $10,000. And so we're, we're moving on with that. I spent 17 hours at the community center on Saturday, so I assure you that it's busy.
It was busy.
As a matter of fact, every room that we have been allowed to participate in was used that day. But with that, we have several things that we would like to bring to your attention. We have, we've had two craft fairs. We have had a paint night that we had to move because we didn't have any heat in the building, but it was very successful, and everybody was accommodating and moved with us. We have had two different music events. One was not publicized as well, so that one wasn't as big a turnout, but this last one we had, I think there was 52 people that were there, which isn't too bad. As any, as everybody knows, when you first start out something, it doesn't go as big. It takes a while to build. And with the craft fair that we did last Saturday, we had 130 people that came through our door, which was not bad compared to the last one we had. The first one we had in August, there was 78 people. So we're moving up. And a lot of people that came through the door were so excited that we were doing that and bringing it to the community that they also want to participate in a fair next year. So we, if we're still in the building, we will certainly will carry that on, and, and we will hopefully at that point be able to spread our wings and help different things with that. So we've had some donations.
Yep.
We've had some donations, and, which is kind of exciting, some that we didn't expect, and we have rented some of the building. But one of the things that we want to do is we have had a number of people contact us, and they would like to have a walking group at night because they work during the day. And we've had, we've had six or seven people, five of which are constant during the morning walking, but there looks like there's quite a big group that wants to go at night. Well, with rec using the gym every night of the week, plus the weekends, that kind of deters what we, you know, have planned to do, what the morning one does. So what we'd like to do is open up the hallway, not, not into the oldest part of the building, but to go up into the wing so that they can walk around the lobby of the community center, go up the hallway, through to the old wing and back around. And so that's not a problem as far as opening up the doors and things, but there are a couple of, I'm not sure what it is, whether it's a refrigerator or what that's in the hallway. And so we would like to get permission or let you know that we intend to move that up in the old part around the corner so that it doesn't interfere, nobody gets hurt or anything. And I know that in the past, you've said that the town doesn't own the building, and I've got permission to do it from the district. I just want to make sure that if you've taken the building...
Well, they, yeah, they technically still do it.
Oh, they do?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we only have had the deed for review. I guess some that we need to discuss when Robin's done. I wanted to give her the floor minute. So, yeah, technically they still own it.
And right now, we have bingo on home, and we have the music jam, because we need more space. We...
What's wrong with using the other hallways too, Robin?
There's nothing wrong with.
Couldn't you use the old cafeteria and all that?
We would love to do that, but.
The, the only thing that I will tell you on that is the, the, that particular part of the building is not heated at the same level. It's cooler.
Right.
It is, it's, uh, the idea of having it open is going to potentially use more heat. If we're gonna access it, keep doors open and so forth, uh, we just need to all be aware of that.
Well, we, we work.
Are you charging for your walking?
No, not yet. No.
Even if it's open only like an hour or two at night, it will use a lot more heat. If they just open that at night. Oh, really?
It opened today.
It shouldn't be. It's supposed to be locked.
The old part was wide open today. Also, the front, the, the community room, uh, then not the community room, the outside community center door was open Friday. And when I leave, I check all, I pull on all three doors. Because if somebody goes out those double doors and it goes like this, the place is insecure.
The, the door, when you go out through the double doors, it bangs like it's closed, but it's not closed. And so the walking group was in there Friday morning and the doors were closed after that. And when I came to set up tables for the craft fair, it was open. So I'm not sure.
So we still have somebody. Sean was down there for practice Friday night.
And this was before he got there.
Before he got there.
Yeah.
So somebody else has a key that's moving in there. I haven't been in the building since before I left on vacation, so.
So the, uh, first two sets of doors were locked. And then the third set going into the old part were propped open. I don't know if it was from the furnace or, I don't know.
No, they haven't been in there.
I have no idea.
They haven't been in there since.
Because usually we don't go down that way. I just went down with another volunteer today to explain. You have to make sure the doors haven't been opened.
Have you guys given keys to?
We haven't.
Well, I've given you three sets of keys, right?
You've given me two sets of keys.
Two sets of keys.
And I've got one and she's got the other.
Right, right.
All right, Sean and I have a set.
Well, no one's been in the building from the town side that I'm aware of at all.
Okay.
Since, since, uh.
I will check, I will check the police, but I do know.
Close those doors because it's gonna save you a lot.
Yeah, because I do know that, uh, there were four classroom doors that were locked and those are unlocked now. So I'm not sure. I came in and asked for the key.
Some of them are district's.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't think so because they turn the keys in.
They do have a set of keys.
They do?
Yeah.
They, they may have been in there for something that I'm unaware of.
I will check them. I will be happy to check.
But nobody from the town's been in there and the, uh, the, uh, heat company hasn't been back since they were here and turned the heat on the first time.
Okay.
So they haven't been in the building. They're trying to, they are gonna try to get here by the end of the week or first of next week and get the other part of the system up and running. So I had conversations with them today.
So the next thing was wifi. I came in, well, must have been two or three weeks ago now and talked about wifi. Because what we'd like to do is have grant writing down at the community center. And it isn't that ITCC wouldn't, you know, take care of that. It's just that, you know, I didn't know whether, at, when I worked in the police station in Pittsfield, they gave the town, the police station free cable. And so I didn't know whether that was a possibility and, you know, we'd like to get it free if we could. And Chris said, no, that, that isn't a possibility, but you were gonna check with.
Well, I haven't, I don't believe they will. They don't, I don't think they give it to us free here. Pretty sure we pay for it. I haven't had a chance to check on it, to be honest with you.
Now, there is wifi down there for some reason. I'm not sure why. But if.
What does it do with the control?
No.
Because, because the district.
We haven't had anything to do with, we haven't talked to anybody about wifi.
Okay.
So there's been no communication on that.
Is something left from the district?
I.
Does it still work?
I didn't think so. You have to have password to get on it, but yes, it is up and running.
Did you check with Jim to see what, if he knows anything? But you didn't know anything about it.
So I'm confused by that. You sure it's not just a modem on?
It says Hatlen two.
Yeah, because, I mean, she says that they don't pay for it anymore, so I can't imagine somebody hasn't shut it off, but.
But do you need it for controls to return us?
No, we, we, they suggested that you have it, but we haven't been using it. No. In fact, she didn't use it last year because she didn't have wifi.
Right.
So.
So they had to bring their machine down when they went to, to turn it on.
Right.
I, we just found the wifi, did the other night, so I didn't know whether, you know, you had, if they.
Nope, we haven't done anything yet. Haven't had any communication from anybody on it.
Okay. Um, and the only other thing is plowing and sanding. I just wanted to publicly thank Hadley. We got down to the craft fair Saturday and there was probably about a six foot by ten foot space that was glare ice. And, you know, that's not a good thing. And so I didn't even get a chance to ask Hadley if there was anything he could do about it. And the next thing I knew, he came back with a bag of, of salt and took care of it. And then Betsy, his daughter, she had to go home and she brought back a shovel and shipped ice. And so it turned out fine. But, you know, that's one thing that we need to come up with some sort of a plan that, you know, we appreciate the fact that it's been plowed out and that Cal has done a nice job. But there are just times when all of a sudden it'll warm up and there'll be ice and whatever. And, and I'm afraid somebody's gonna fall and get hurt.
It was pretty slippery down there.
So.
Well, I think it'd be smart to buy some, some salt to have right there to put out when you're there. I mean, we're not gonna be able, if we come down there from the town's perspective, if we were gonna do it, you're gonna get dirt and salt. You're not gonna, so you're gonna have a tracking issue. Uh, but we certainly can do some. I, that's something I was gonna report on today. I talked to the attorneys today about our statement, our, uh, memorandum of understanding that we have. And, and she says we're covered to be able to do the plowing and the, and the sanding. So we'll be able to take care of that.
Yeah.
Uh, we did do it once last week and, and our intent will be to do it, so.
Okay.
If there's a major issue, let us know and we'll get the town crew over there.
Perfect.
But if there's an event going on, you should be, you should have sand, assault there available.
But even.
Yeah.
If you, they, you can get a few buckets to have, just sprinkle around, huh?
You know, it's like this morning, it was kind of slippery down there and everybody made it in without falling, but I was nervous.
Yeah, they need.
It's one in Maine. It's one in Maine. It's slipping everybody badly.
Yeah. So, we would like to have the opportunity to come back occasionally to tell you our good news. If we have.
Yes.
When you meet next meeting.
And our next meeting is going to be on the twelfth, at five o'clock. So anybody that would like to come, we'd love to have you.
And we will schedule a fundraising and grant committee meeting here soon as we're finished.
Good plan for the.
It's going to be too busy down there this weekend.
No, not yet, because we didn't have a place to ho- house.
You don't think the community room is big enough?
I don't. No, and the thing is, if that's the only room that we can use and we rent it out, then, you know, what are we gonna do with bingo? And the thing is, you can't have it in the gym or at least somebody ought to help us buy some tables that we can move because the tables that we've got there.
Possible that we're dealing with the flooring of the gym, that we're trying to do that. And then, uh, we can't do the acoustic jam we were planning unless we have more than one room limits. So we're at the point.
So when you say your acoustic jam with more than one, no, what are you talking about?
It's, it's like, say, when we used to do them up in Cambridge.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it was multiple rooms so that sometimes we'd have a hundred musicians.
Mm-hmm.
And they'd break into different rooms and kind of who they wanted to play with or their level. But right now we really don't have that without.
There's a community room and the room behind the stage.
Behind the stage?
Yes, there's a room behind the stage.
There's two rooms up behind the stage.
Yeah.
And there's.
Cause I let him live up for one room.
One, well, yeah, the other one's not huge. No, it's, it's just a small access here. It's not very big, but.
It's more like a PA system, that is.
I mean, my suggestion on that is that we all sit down, uh, GAVICAP, the library, ITCC, the town, and talk it through. I think that makes the most sense.
Yeah.
We were, we were under the impression.
We had it to use this year.
That we had it to use this year. And so that's what we.
That was not my understanding at all.
The meetings, it was.
Hmm?
Yeah. To use the building.
Yeah, but we were talking about the community center.
Now, at the ITCC meetings, it was discussed.
Plus there's like five room, five or six rooms in the community center. I mean, we told them we couldn't.
Well, we don't, Dave's point was that if the library's gonna use the library, why clean it out and move the stuff and then turn around and move it back in?
Have they made a commandment?
They haven't. They haven't had a chance to go and look at it. They haven't, they don't own it yet.
They got books, so they must, somebody's been in there.
What's that?
They got books, so somebody's been in there.
Yeah, they did go in.
The library did?
Yeah. If you, if you read the email that was sent to you, the librarian said that he went in, he got books.
And that he met a teacher who didn't realize that these books had been left and asked if they wanted to go for her post.
And we don't care what happens to the books. We want the space.
I have no idea.
Library.
We have no idea.
It wasn't anything.
It wasn't anything to do with us. And we don't want books. We just want them out of the space.
Must be the.
Somebody must have a bunch of keys out there because we have, I haven't let the library folks in at all.
I have an idea. It was before he made a commitment to buy, to take over the building.
Oh, that he took the stuff out?
Uh, we don't know when, but I do.
Well, that would have been.
That would have been.
Well, it might have been, but that would have been, that would have been under the direction of the school, right.
Yeah.
I thought you meant they've been in in the last few weeks.
No, I don't know when they've been in there, but I'm assuming that it was before the district turned the building.
And the sign is.
Okay, the, uh, couple of things that I have on that is we did send the deed to our attorney. Uh, there's one little hitch with one of the deeds and they're trying to work through that at the school department. But, uh, the memorandum from Sarah Reinhardt today is, uh, I have read the memorandum of understanding the town signed with GAVICAP on nine twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen, draft post-closing agreement between the town and RSU nineteen for their request. I'm writing to you with any concerns I have about the PCA imposing on the, uh, donation by the RSU before the town has had the opportunity to perform the diligence on the property. Uh, the post-closing agreement, they have some concerns. They're, they're mostly definition type things. Uh, they're in red. I'll let you just take a peek. It's mostly, uh, definition items on that that they're making suggestions on. They're also pointing out that if, uh, we go ahead and move forward with the title search, uh, the, the school may have the information out there before the title search is done. But the, the final thing that, uh, she wanted to point out under due diligence, she said, I understand that there is an underground storage tank on the real estate and asbestos in the building. Also, I understand that neither the RSU nor the town have reviewed title for the real estate that, and there may be the wings on it, title defects and or easements over the real estate. We advise the town to perform the final diligence before it accepts the deeds, particularly with regard to the tank and the title review. With regard to review, it's possible, although unlikely, that it could cost up to two thousand dollars. Um, and that this time of year will take up to four weeks. Please know, all we know is, uh, what's in the deeds, which have many, many sources of title recited. Not only is going through all of those possibly a lengthy task, but I also fear that piecing lots together could be difficult. I simply have no idea what we'd be getting into. Uh, if the town could wait to accept the deed until after the due diligence is complete, then that would ensure the town knows what the risk is, uh, that they're taking. Number one, becoming in the chain, up title, no matter how short a time. And number two, GAVICAP having to walk, uh, having to walk away once issues are discovered. And then the town having to absorb the carrying costs of being unable to find another, to take the title. So, uh, those are some risks that we just need to talk about. The, uh, tank and, and asbestos, we've already, we already know about it. I don't know that that is as big a deal. Uh, I do think it makes sense to do this title search. I wanna know what you guys think of that. It's a two thousand dollar commitment, uh, could be less than that. But Dave Felton, I called him and he, he thought it was a good idea. I talked to him today, so.
You think sharing?
Yes, yes. So I just wanted to, to, uh, bring it to you, see what your thoughts are about. Uh, yeah, I would say that would be half and half. Uh, honestly, I, I was gonna run it through the whole program the way, it's a part of acquiring the building. So I was gonna run it right through. There's a forty, forty, twenty.
My good dear.
What's that?
I said, they're probably not knowing probably what I.
Nope, nope. We can, we can make it fifty, fifty.
I mean, if there was a chance we was gonna own it, that would be different.
Yeah, yes.
At some point, that, that has to be done regardless, so somewhere along the process, title search should be done.
Right.
So.
And we'll allow Chris to do the, uh, title search and Dave Felton and GAVICAP pay half.
One second. All those in favor?
Okay, the final thing I have on the other, does anybody have anything on the other? I only have one more item. Uh, under other, uh, we have a lot of requests from the, uh, heat group that has addressed you. Uh, I've reviewed it and had an opportunity to look at it several times. And I think it's done. We, my recommendation would be that we get the town's attorney involved.
I agree.
Someone.
Second. All those in favor?
Can we have the answer by the seventh, as they requested?
Uh, I don't know. Judy's just had the chance to.
I just got.
Come here, so, uh, we can do our best. We'll see if the attorney can turn it around that quick. I think this will be a challenge because we're gonna have to meet with them. Yeah, so.
Well, we can say at this point that we'll do it as quickly as possible.
Okay, well, I have sunny warrants.
Yes, okay. We have the sunny warrants.
So this is obvious.
Your house stuff.
Yeah.
It's just not, yeah. Because the deadline is tough. She's saying if they're gonna be in the gym, we can pause wherever it's the captain. Must have caught.
So do you still want the bingo stuff down to the floor?
We're up in there at this point.
The bingo stuff is down.
You got it over there already?
Oh, I, we thought, I thought you meant out of there.
It's out of the town hall. It's down to the.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were talking.
Lot got a group from all of them together and got it moved.
Is that something that could be done at the fire hall?
It was done at the fire hall.
And it wasn't successful.
Because it was too small. That's why the people say, tell me, they didn't go there. There wasn't a room.
Somebody bingo players. Some of the bingo players need a spot, this five, so like a table like this, and it'd be two, six people at it.
Because they take up so many pads and stuff.
And then you got your, oh, those...
Sounds like a discussion.
Your snacks.
And the snacks are important.
Yeah, definitely. They, some places even cook, have the kitchen, and they make meals, and people come early and...
Sopper dinner, yeah.
See, that's what I planned, you know, but...
Yeah, that's what we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, come downstairs.
The old gym. The old gym.
She has no idea where she runs her books.
It's all, you know, Jimmy would just...
She probably carries everything.
You did?